Welcome to the March 22nd Selectmen's Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Father, to the Son, and to one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Moment of silence for Norma Clark. Norma passed away peacefully at the age of 94. She had a very full life going back to school in her 40s after the death of her husband and graduating with her LPN, and two years later, her IRN degree as part of the first graduating class at Quincy College School of Nursing. After retiring from nursing at Quincy City Hospital, Norma became an outreach worker for the Town of Abington's Council and agent for nearly 20 years. Her faith, her family were her most utmost, were the utmost important in her life, and she served many committees doing God's work. Norma will be missed by all who knew and loved her. Thank you. Thank you. Kevin, do you have any public announcements?
No.
Did you see Lee Ann's emails?
Yeah.
You want to read them?
Yeah.
Public announcements, Mike?
Yeah, just one, just a general reminder for everyone. You know, if anyone in town has an issue and they'd like it addressed, maybe a complaint, maybe even a compliment, I don't know, we ask that you reach out to any of us on the Board or the Trade Minister. Town manager, one of three ways, either our town email, which is right on the town website, you can also email the town manager, or you can also call his office. He'll gladly put you in touch with whoever you need to be in touch with and, you know, at least point you in the right direction. I think we forget sometimes that those are the best ways to reach out to people. So, we're here, we're listening.
Kevin?
Just a reminder, absentee ballots for the April 24th Annual Town Election are now available. If you're unable to attend the election, you may request an absentee ballot. Please provide an application or a note with your signature requesting that a ballot be mailed to you. Permanent changes were made to the law in the summer of 2020 that affect early and absentee voting. As a result of these changes, the deadline to apply for a vote by mail ballot, whether absentee or early, if applicable, is 5:00 PM on the fourth business day before the election. A voter admitted, can also be a voter admitted to a healthcare facility after 12:00 PM on the seventh day before the election can request a hand-delivered absentee ballot. And drop boxes if provided can be used to return all mail-in ballots. The drop box in the front of Town Hall is the silver box on the left. The deadline to apply for an absentee or early ballot by mail is 5:00 PM on the fourth business day prior to the election. That's April 20th, 2021. And also a reminder that elections will be held at the Beaverbrook Elementary School at 1 Ralph Hamlin Lane. Thanks.
I got two quick ones. Griffin Dairy Committee Community Garden is taking applications for the garden plots. You can fill out an application on the Town website and send your check in for $25 to get a plot. They're also looking for somebody to join them on the Griffin Dairy Committee. You'll be required to do one meeting a month and put in 15 to 20 hours of work at the farm during the summer. You can apply online for that position, too.
And just so everyone knows, coming up this spring and into June, the Selectmen reappoint the boards. Anyone that's up for reappointment or open seats, or if there isn't an open seat, you're still welcome to apply for any of the boards. That'll be up on the website, and we do those appointments in June. Next public announcement, I'd like to introduce our new Veteran Services Officer, Adam Gunn.
Hello, everyone. Does this work? I guess I don't need it. Everybody can hear me? Use my outside voice. So, I started, and I just want to talk a little bit about what I've been doing and what the plans are so far in the veterans in my world. In October of last year is when I started. I spent the first month or so kind of getting access to the programs, getting out in the community, working with everyone now that they know they have a full-time Veterans Agent here. The support that Scott and Sue have given me have been immensely helpful in allowing me to do my job here as the Veterans Agent. One of Scott's goals for me when I started was to get my name out in the community and get out there. So, I started an Abington Veterans Facebook page. The amount of contact I've received from that has been great. Both, let's see, excuse me. Off the top of my head, it's not working. Earlier this month, I started a copy with a Veterans Agent at Colonial Health Rehabilitation, which now is going to go on the first Tuesday of every month. Once COVID restrictions open up a little bit more, we're going to move that over to the Council on Aging and kind of have an open, like a lunch that the Council on Aging is going to provide, and just give an opportunity for veterans or widows or family members to come and talk with me and find out what's available for them or answer questions, et cetera. Recently, early this year, we worked with the middle school and the food pantry for some overseas care packages. We have a Abington vet who's deployed overseas right now in Qatar. The middle school children, students, created Valentine's Day cards and filled a box full of them, as well as the food pantry donated food and candy for the service members that are out there. So far, I processed 32 separate VA claims for Abington and Whitman. Just this month, Whitman got a full-time Veterans Agent, so I no longer have to help him take care of them as well. I do a lot, I get a lot of phone calls from family members in the community not knowing what to do about their family members or fathers or husbands that are veterans, so I do a lot of home assessments, going into homes, finding out what the needs are. A lot of people don't have any help at all, so we find out what avenues we can help them with the VA, whether it be in-home care visits, financial help, et cetera. Recently got, the Department of DPW took care of cleaning up the route about Memorial out there with the flagpole. We still need to work on getting the flagpole redone. If you look closely at it, it's peeling and chipping, rusting, and painting, so that's in the work as well to really kind of spruce that area up, maybe put some plants around the border, so at least we have a little nicer area there coming into Town Hall and the library. Some of the things working on in the future, Liz Shea had come up with a hometown hero banner plan. Right now, we have 50 banners throughout the town on the street signs. Currently, they have the happy holidays and working on for Veterans Day, getting some, basically sponsoring it out of the community. And if you have an Abington veteran family member who you'd like to honor or recognize, whether still with us or passed away, who served in the military, we'd have an option for a fee so family members could put their family members up throughout the community in Abington. So, I'm currently going to bring that idea to the Memorial Committee and see if they'd like to pursue something like that for Veterans Day this year. Partnership with the Knights of Columbus, and they're going to put on a turn a whole cornerment here hopefully in July, given the circumstances and the proceeds to that will go to the Abington Veterans Fund. We didn't have a policy on the Abington Veterans Fund and how it was used, so we've created that, and I'm going to work with Scott and Sue to get that to you, to get it approved, so we can kind of advertise that a little bit more on how we utilize the Abington Veterans Fund we have for an emergency fund for veterans. One of the other projects I just started is working with local businesses in the community who offer discounts or services to veterans and milita, or police and healthcare workers. Tomorrow, I'm going to sit down with the Sarcastic Swine Barbecue Restaurant, kind of do a sit-down interview with them, and then write an article with some pictures. It'll be posted with the Senior Informer, a little social media. My plan with that is to obviously recognize Abington veteran businesses that take care of veterans and hopefully give the business back to them as well. I know they're really excited about that. Memorial Day this year is just going to be a parade due to COVID restrictions. We are planning on doing the same thing for Veterans Day, but maybe a little more activity for Veterans Day, but we just have to wait and see what the restrictions are for COVID until we can make plans. But right now, we're not planning a parade for Veterans Day, just due to all that's been laid upon us. I miss saying things, Scott. Do you have any other questions at all?
So, you said there is a parade?
There is not going to be a parade this year.
There's no parade for Memorial Day?
Due to a small ceremony, and then depending on what the restrictions are, we may be able to have, you know, an event or a food or something that we can do, but it's, the parade just seems like a bit too much and most of the other. I've partnered with a lot of the other VSOs and the local towns, and I've came to part of the two Veteran Service Officer organizations within Massachusetts, and everybody's pretty much on the, for the most part, doing the same thing and just cutting backs and if any issue.
So, hopefully by Veterans Day, we can get back to doing that.
Hopefully.
Yeah. Any comments, questions from the Board?
No, just want to thank you, Adam. You are a great addition to this town. I, you know, I had talked to Scott when he was searching, and I've heard nothing but good things about you and the work that you're doing, especially from the veterans. So, thank you.
Thank you. You know, a lot of the things I'm being able to do, I just want to kind of shout out one more person is Lori Barry in accounting. What she's been able to do for me since starting here has been extremely significant. She's been able to analyze what's been paid out to the veterans and what's been authorized to them. She's found veterans, thousands of dollars that they were owed to them from the Department of Veteran Services. She's also found a lot of money as well that's been owed back to the town. The Town Department of Veteran Services for Massachusetts pays between 75% to 100% of most things that come out of my budget, depending on what it is. So, she's been going back three years and uncovering things that are still owed to the town and to the veterans, so I couldn't do what I'm doing without her. Thank you.
Adam, I want to say thank you as well. I've heard nothing but compliments in town, out of town.
Thank you.
You know, your name's getting out there, and I appreciate all the work you've done, and I know the veterans appreciate it as well.
Thank you.
The veterans banners, is that a system up and running yet, if people wanted to?
Not quite yet, so we've just kind of, kind of got an example here. You know, you can put your, the military photo on the bottom, you can kind of put the family that it's sponsored from, if you'd like, and then, of course, the veteran's name on there. Meeting with the Memorial Committee next month to see if they'd like to take this. It seems more like a project that would be good for them and all, obviously partnership with collecting, because we have to, it's going to be quite the effort to get photos that work and the money and forms, but I want to see if they'll help out in doing that project. But as soon as we get more solid foundation on what we need, we'll put it out there to the community.
I've seen those in other towns, and they're a good addition.
I just can't think about, you know, being able to see, you know, your grandfather up on the street, being able to drive by that every day and what that would mean to someone.
Yeah.
Pretty incredible.
It's a good program.
Well, thank you very much, Adam. Again, I've heard nothing but good things about you. We're glad that we have a full-time Veteran Service Officer for Abington now, and it's, it sounds like it's going very well. So, thank you.
Yes, I'm staying busy.
Thank you. At this point in the meeting, we allow public comments for an agenda item, but it appears that there's quite a crowd here for 267 North Quincy Street, so I'm going to put those comments off until we bring that up for discussion. There's no point doing it twice. So, after it's, after 6:40, so we have... The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Monday, March 22nd, at 6:40 PM in the Carter Room, 500 Glenwood Way, for a commercial garage license for Henry Felix, DBA Champion Auto Service at 43 Highland Road. Tim Chapin, Chairman, Board of Selectmen. Do I have a motion to open the hearing?
Make a motion to open the meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Henry, are you here? So, we have, we got an email from the chief today that did his investigation and has no problem with it. Why don't you just give us a little bit of background about yourself and what you plan on doing up there?
All right, good evening. Name is Henry Felix. Here representing the Champion Auto Services.
Could you speak up a little? With the mask on, it's a little difficult to hear sometimes, and that microphone doesn't do the room that shit for home.
All right. I'm here on behalf of Champion Auto Services, independent auto business, strictly auto repair, basic maintenance. Been an avid car enthusiast and mechanic for off and on seven years plus, working in various locations as well as home, garage. It's just an opportunity to establish myself as an independent business and an outstanding community, and just looking forward to progressing. Working independently has its benefits, especially in times like this, but therefore, now that times are changing and the dynamics are changing in the automotive industry, I just feel like there's more of an opportunity to reach out to the people and be more transparent as to what they're investing in and understanding what they're putting their money in rather than having any doubts or any questions.
Okay. So, you're renting one of the bays on Highland, correct?
Yep, would be 43 Highland Road, Unit C. So, it'd be two bays in one location.
Two bays, okay. And you'll have two, four, five, six, seven, eight cars?
Yes. Two spaces reserved for staff and six for customers, and all vehicles can be parked inside the location if necessary.
So, everything can be parked inside?
Yes, sir.
As you may or may not know, we've had some issues with other tenants up there in the past, not abiding by the hours, and, you know, that's going to be strictly enforced.
Yes, sir.
And just want you to be aware about that, of that. There are residential houses around there, so we have to be aware of that.
Yes.
And you have to be a good neighbor. So, at this point, does the Board have any questions? I'm going to open it up to the audience. Does anyone want to speak on this hearing? Yes. Please state your name and address for those records, please.
No worries, no worries. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Ian Welch, 81 Highland Road. The only thing I wish you well, the only thing I would like to address is noise and also there not being any work done out in the common area, that all the work is kept inside and no loud music, you know, no cars with stereos blaring while you guys are working. Only because it is a neighborhood and the sound carries.
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's the only thing I have to say. I wish you luck, though.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the Board.
We got to close the hearing.
Yeah.
You have a motion to close the hearing?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve the permit for Henry Felix at 43 Highland Road.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Good luck.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, sir.
The next hearing is 6:50. And we are 6:50. It's a request for change of hours in common liquor license and liquor license at O.O. Cantina, 800 Brockton Ave., Joe Armstrong. Joe, are you here? Is this a hearing, Scott? This wasn't an advert, this didn't have to be an advert.
No, they just changed in hours, right?
Right, so we don't have to open a hearing. A little background on this, Joe took over the kitchen, as you know, and then he got his liquor license. So, this is to amend the hours so he can serve the liquor during normal liquor-serving hours. And he's looking for 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM on Monday through Friday, Saturday 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM, Sunday 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM, and that's because he serves brunch on the weekends, as he told us last time.
Sunday to 1:00 AM or 1:00 PM? I can't really read that. Is it 1:00 AM for Sunday?
We can go midnight.
No, it was not 1:00 AM.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's the standard in town, every, all the liquor license, correct, Scott? 1:00 AM?
That's, yeah, the maximum allowable.
Yeah. I'm going to open this up to the floor, too, if anyone has any questions, anyone? All the approvals were in our last package.
Yep.
So, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the change in hours.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Guys, have it. Good luck to you.
Thank you, you guys have a good night.
Okay, so now, if it's okay with everyone, I'd like to skip one and two, and we'll get right to the discussion and possible vote of cease and desist at 267 North Quincy Street. Is that fine with everyone?
Yeah.
All right, Scott, why don't you tell us what's going on up to this point?
All right. Not all. You want to come on up and, I think, I think the chief can probably sum it up better than anybody right now. He's an appoint person on this.
Thank you. The Fire Department's been very familiar with the area at the property at 267 North Quincy Street for many years. We've had numerous different types of cars up there, so we're familiar with it. A lot of times, there's, there's outside burning, there's, there's been some illegal burning. We go up, we deal with it. We deal with either the property owner or the individual business or entity at the time that was doing it, and typically, they do comply, to be honest with you. In fact, we haven't really had many major incidents up there until past Wednesday, which really opened everything back up again. They have worked with us to try to label some of the streets up there because it is confusing, Street A, B, and C. That was kind of to help us just in the event that there was any type of emergency so we can find it faster. But the first thing I want to say to everybody in this room, including the Board and including anybody watching at home, or including anybody at some point that's going to read about this on social media or the news, is this is private property, it is posted as private property. Nobody should be up there without the verbal or preferable written permission of the owners, because otherwise, you're trespassing. And it's also dangerous up there. There's vehicles moving around, it's tight spaces, we'll address that later, but nobody should be up there walking around, milling around, without the express written permission from them. I just want to make that clear to everybody, and that's for everybody's safety. That being said, this is going to be an ongoing investigation that began since last Wednesday. Last Wednesday, the Abington Fire Department was called to an area at 267 North Quincy Street for a medical emergency. Ultimately, unfortunately, that resulted in a fatality. I was not able to go to that scene that day. However, the next day, the deputy brought me up to that scene because I wanted to see where it was. We had an investigation going on that. And in driving through the complex, I was amazed at how, again, rapidly it had grown up there. I have not been up there for probably about six months, I think, and I haven't been through the entire place since we attempted to do an inspection with somebody else at Department Heads downstairs a couple of years ago. So, seeing what I saw, knowing that the seriousness of the incident that occurred last week, I immediately requested through Town Council and actually told Town Council I want an emergency cease and desist. I want an administrative search warrant so we can get in there properly and see what is going on to prevent any other issues like this in the future as best we can. This is beyond even just some of the fire load concerns that I have and what else could be going up there. So, that all occurred on Thursday. Thursday morning, the first thing in the office, I had a meeting, or I scheduled a meeting with Town Council with all of the applicable department heads. By the end of business day on Thursday, we had a cease and desist order written. However, we weren't able to enact that until the next day. That was delivered by Constable to the property owner. I don't know what time that was, but that was. I also went up and personally posted at all of the entrances to that location a warning that it is a dangerous property for everybody. The property owner was supposed to notify all of the tenants of a cease and desist. I don't believe that happened, as we discovered today. Also on Friday, I went to Brockton District Court and I requested, was granted, an administrative search warrant, which we executed this morning. This morning, just so I don't forget anybody, that search warrant was executed by the Abington Fire Department in conjunction with the Department of Fire Services Code Compliance Office, the Abington Building Department, the Abington Board of Health, the Abington Conservation Commission, the State DEP, National Grid Electric, because they have a right-of-way going directly through that property. BCI, Bureau of Criminal Investigation, was there for documentation. That does not mean there's criminal activities. That's the title of their entity, they're a neutral photographer that is standard practice we use all the time, just to document photographs as we go, and we were all assisted by the Abington Police Department and Deputy Cutter. There were no issues when we went up there. The landlord also had a couple of their lawyers up there with us. They accompanied us, one of them most of the way. One lawyer was for one specific site, and we went through and spent about five hours in, or three hours, excuse me, and conducted a thorough investigation of what we could see in plain sight. We did not go opening vehicles, buildings like that. A lot of them are locked. Nobody seemed to have access or a knowledge of what was in any of the vehicles or buildings, and they're not supposed to be buildings because there's no hydrants up there. So, when I say building, it's either a structure type of assembly or a trailer type of vehicle. We did not enter those unless there was a door open and we just looked inside. Following that investigation, and we are still investigating, we have a lot of information that all of the departments are going through, and there are reporting to me. I basically took this on. I am spearheading this effort, just under my office, under my position, it's easier. So, all of those departments are supposed to report to me. They simply have not had a chance to compile that yet. I'm hoping to get all that back this week. We do have another meeting with Town Council tomorrow. I do not know if it's going to be ready by then, but, but I'm trying. I got some initial documents from my Fire Prevention Officer today, working on that, and there is a lengthy list of issues that we found. There were three businesses that we were able to define that we really did not have major issues that we allowed to reopen. One of the issues up there, one of the questions, is we don't know exactly who owns each property. We were given a map in a list of businesses shortly before I came here, about an hour ago. However, we have no names, we have no contact information, we have no addresses, we have no type of what the business is. As everybody just saw here, previous to me speaking, the normal routine with how every properly licensed and permitted business in this town receives their ability to do that. This Board grants a lot of that, the departments that need to inspect that for different code compliance, we go out and do that, and that is all done prior to any business opening up or being able to operate. As of right now, the Abington Fire Department has zero permits for any business up at that Again, this is ongoing. Now, we want to work with the landlord to get where they need to be. Right now, there is still a cease and desist in effect for that entire property with the exception of three businesses that we were able to define. However, one of the issues we're going to require, because it's state law, this is not me just, this is state law, we're doing our job, is the landlord has to apply to your Board for a license for that land for the storage of flammable liquids and gases, and anything, and that's congregate, anything up to including over 2,000 gallons. Now, that means you could have 100 gallons at one location, a couple hundred gallons at another location, all in totality, anything up to 2,000 gallons, your Board has to grant a license, and you, and I'm assuming... And you, and I'm assuming, you have to go through that normal license procedure. I don't have a timeframe for that. That's going to be in your board.
Is that for fuel in vehicles or?
No, this would be for fuel.
For fuel vehicles and?
There are forklift trucks up there that have propane.
Okay.
They're propane-operated. I don't know where they're storing that propane. I'm assuming it's somewhere on site. Just different gallons of any combustible flammable liquid up there. It's obviously, from what we saw today, it is obviously conglomerate. It's going to total over 2,000 gallons. So that needs to be done. I'm going to be speaking to town council tomorrow to see if the cease and desist will remain in a, should remain in effect until that is granted, or if there is something we can work with that. I don't have the answer to that, and I have very mixed feelings on which way to proceed on that after seeing some of the things that we saw today. I think a lot of the things absolutely can be remedied, but I think every business up there, just like the business that we just saw prior to this, really need to, they have to, there's no choice. They have to be properly licensed and permitted in order to proceed to prevent any other injuries or any other fires or issues up there. I'm not going to get into the detailed list for a number of reasons because we're going to go over that once I compile it. But there was enough that we saw that there was a lot of sources of ignition. Housekeeping up there is non-existent. That needs to take place. We did have a verbal conversation with the owner as well as the attorney, and I think they're going to begin doing that now, I'm hoping. I think they're understanding that, as well as the fact that ultimately the landlord is responsible for everything that goes up there, even the tenants. We're going through this right now at 500 Chestnut Street, where they're building this large industrial park. The landlord, the landlord or the owner of that entire property is going for that same license I just mentioned because he knows whatever's in there, he's going to have at least 2,000 gallons of flammable liquids or gases or storage because that's the nature of what they do. This is the way for us, at that point, for the fire department to grant a permit, and we can go in and inspect every business and make sure everything is safe. They comply, they have the correct fire extinguishers, they have the correct training on arc welding, they have everything that is required to have. All of the cylinders, whether it's an acetylene cylinder, which is a separate permit in itself, or if there's a high-pressure cylinder, they're supposed to be chained up to an object or a wall so that they don't fall down and create a rocket hazard, literally. All of these things, what we do. We have none of this going up here at this point because I don't believe any of these businesses are properly licensed or permitted. So we've never been able to get in to do the inspections. Again, this is because it's all private property. And when we go in and we see one issue, we deal with that one issue. That doesn't necessarily give us the right to check the entire place. We're somewhat in an emergent situation, limited to that area. From what I saw the other day, at this point, that's why we got the administrative warrant, to just open the whole thing up, get everybody involved with what they need to see. I don't know what the building department saw. I don't know what the conservation commission saw. I'm waiting to hear back from them, as well as the Board of Health. National Grid Electric, we're ordering anything stored under those lower, very high voltage power lines removed immediately because that's an obvious hazard. So we are beginning, we are going to work with the landowner on this, I am assuming. And one final thing, beyond 267 North Quincy Street, we also have a couple other locations that are beginning to get into this scope in town. And we are working on them. There is one adjacent to this property. There is one right now beginning on Bedford Street. And if any of those residents that are around them are watching or hear this, we are working on that. And we're going to be doing the same process to make sure that they comply as well, to make sure that whatever usage on that land, whether it's an open-air commercial garage, which is what it appears to be, or whether it's a junkyard, or whether it's a bulk storage of combustible materials such as mulch, they're properly licensed and permitted. So we're, this is ending. We're trying to fix this so nobody else gets hurt, nobody else gets killed. We're simply doing our job. Do you have any questions for me?
Do you know how many businesses are up there? Permitted or non-permitted?
A list that I got today, and we were just barely getting a chance to look at it. I believe it said 18. I'm, I don't have that in front of me, and I looked at it briefly. I, it's roughly 20, I would believe. It's in that ballpark, I think.
You say there's no hydrants on the property?
There is no hydrants on that property. I spoke to, and this is one of my main concerns, it always has been. Every hydrant up there is in Brockton, and it's across the street. Now, we can get water, but this is going in very deep, and that's a challenge for any fire department.
The hydrants are across the street?
I did reach out to the Abington Rockland Water Superintendent to ask, what is the possibility of getting even a temporary emergency hydrant? There really is not from the Abington side. This would have to be something that the town of Abington would have to negotiate with the city of Brockton to move their water over to our side of the street and then in. It's not easy. The Abington main ends at 585 Chestnut Street. And even the Gables development, I believe they're all fed from Brockton hydrants, even though they're physically in Abington. I believe the feed flows of Brockton.
Water and soil from the Gables is through Brockton.
So you wouldn't be able to run a temporary pipe from a hydrant across the street? That would be a hazard, obviously. There's nothing on this side of the street to hook into?
Correct.
I appreciate you going after, check every other business, outdoor storages. I know there's others in town that I've received complaints about, I can talk to you about later.
Anyone else? So just before I open it up to the crowd, I just want to make a couple of points. It's my understanding that the zoning board, several years ago, approved open lot storage for a couple of the lots up there, not for the entire property. But that permit requires the vehicles to be registered. It's not just 100 unregistered vehicles in the allotted open lot. There are guidelines you have to go through with that permission. So I think some of that might be violated. A junkyard must be registered and approved and get a license from this board. I'm not saying it's a junkyard up there. I'm just saying, a junkyard needs a license from this board. The same as a Class II license to sell vehicles needs a license from this board. And anyone doing repairs on any type of vehicle needs a license from this board. So we're not out there to put anyone out of business. We're out there to make sure that things are done properly, just like you saw and the chief said at a prior hearing tonight. Every December, we reapprove all the licenses for used car lots, and I think March is the repair garages. But they have to be inspected, and we get the report from the police chief, the fire chief. And if their report is good, then we typically would approve the license, providing all the taxes and everything are paid. So that's the process, how it has to go. And you heard the chief, and the reason there's a process there is for safety reasons. So the town knows what's going on up there. So, like I said, we're not here to put anyone out of business, like social media has been saying, but it has to be done the way the bylaws says it has to be done. So if anyone has anything to say, please come to the microphone and speak.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Genus, a Affordable Town. I was calling, I wanted to ask, because the fire marshal was saying that everybody needs a fire permit, but I don't carry any hazardous fluids or anything like that. I'm just a tow company.
I don't think, and I'm not speaking for the chief, I don't think he meant specific people up there. But I think he meant overall, there's probably more than 2,000 gallons of flammable up there. So somebody has to, you know, we have to get a grip on that, who it is, who has the flammable. I mean, if this yard section has, you know, a 55-gallon drum of diesel fuel, and this one over here has propane for their forklifts, there has to be a license on that property for that. And I'm, I'm assuming it would be the landlord that would apply for that because that would encompass all of them.
Exactly, okay. All right, thank you.
I believe that the fire chief is saying that every vehicle on the property would have to be registered. Is that correct, gentlemen here?
My understanding is open lot storage, a permit for open lot storage is for registered vehicles. And I'll see if I can find that here. Open lot storage of registered transport vehicles and trailers. Open lot storage of registered trucks and trailers used for temporary storage. Open lot storage or sale of junk or salvage material. That goes back to me saying that you need a license from this board for sale of junk or salvage. Open lot storage of goods and materials used in connection with commercial or industrial use.
But that wouldn't be covered under that, would it?
Well, I'd have to, someone would have to explain to me what the goods and material used in connection with commercial and industrial use with all those unregistered cars, boats, and trucks up there. I just don't understand what that has to do with anyone's business up there, what they're storing them for. But there, as you see, there are licenses that are required.
What licenses are you seeing now?
What are you doing? What's your business?
Trucking.
Trucking, hauling, repairing?
Just haul.
Are your vehicles registered?
Yes. I mean, I can have vehicles that are not at any given point.
I don't know if your section, I don't know where your section is. I don't know if that was approved for open lot storage. I'd have to see the zoning and the map, the site plan that they submitted to zoning when that was approved.
I think that, going back to what the chief said, this is, this is a big piece of land that he, the chief just got information a couple hours ago on different sections. This is going to take a lot of time to go through and try to figure this out. What businesses are there? What businesses can have, what needs special permits? What are not allowed permits? What does have permits? Everything is going to have to be gone through here. I mean, there's a lot of stuff in that land, a lot of different businesses that the town, I guess, doesn't seem to know what's up there, and that's what we need to go through.
How many vehicles do you have?
Six.
Six? Do you pay excise tax in the town of Abington?
Or bill no.
So then, so they're not registered here in Abington, then?
No, I said I don't owe you none, no. That means they're paid.
Oh, you do pay excise tax in Abington, then? Okay, so they are registered here in Abington. Registered vehicles, I mean, apparently, I don't see a problem with that.
There are times when I'm going to have a couple of trucks there that are not registered.
These are going to be temporary, though. You're not talking, going to leave them there for years at a time, right?
Could be, depends.
Well, see, that's where we run into a problem, apparently.
So you're saying that that's an issue that we're going to the table with?
You're going to have to, once this is all straightened out with the chief and the building commissioner, the Board of Health, and DEP, and everyone else, then everyone, the landlord, will know what licenses are required, and someone's going to have to apply for them. We cannot allow unlicensed businesses to operate. There's bylaws in the town for a reason. And everyone else has to abide by them.
Do we have a list of the permits that are issued on that property right now? Or do we know a total?
Yeah, so, you know, as we've been saying, this is, you know, we're just getting into this now. There is a list of different permits that were granted over the years. As you said, there's been zoning relief, sort of the loose of the whole property in different areas of the property. So right now, we're just at that point where we're trying to see who's out there, what they're doing, what they fall under. And the goal would be to take someone, if your business requires additional permits, then if we have them, we'll help you get them. You know, the goal is not to stop anything, it's to clean it up, make sure that everybody's safe, and that if there's some sort of permit you need from this office, then we'll assist you in getting that permit. If there's a permit that we can't give you, then we can't give you, and we'll help you work with a way to conform to what you have to do. But right now, you know, we're just finding out and figuring out what's out there and trying to compare it to our records to see, you know, what we, what we've already approved. And, you know, from there, we'll take it from there. But that's going to be, you know, sometime next week before, or the end of this week, before we get it all unwrapped.
Fire chief, biggest issue probably would be a fire hydrant. What is this likeness of making the issue much simpler by getting the fire hydrant there?
Well, we'd love to get a fire hydrant there, but again, we're, we're not at that point yet.
But the town works, and the people, so we're going to work together and see what it is.
Well, the cost of the fire hydrant would fall under the property owner, for one thing. The town would not be paying to put a fire hydrant up there. There's somebody that just built a house on Central Street, and he had a 600-foot driveway, and it cost him $12,000 to put a fire hydrant in there because it was required. So that's on the property owner to do that. And, you know, maybe, I don't know if the property owner's here or not, but maybe that's something he wants us out looking into, if it's going to be a requirement.
These are the things that need to be looked into, which is going to take some time. As we can see, there's a lot of stuff up there and a lot of stuff to go through.
Is he lifting the cease and desist? Because we're in the, we're in this, and we don't know, you don't know, I don't know. I mean, you know, we still got to go on.
So we don't have all the answers, but you need to work with the fire chief and these other boards. And they'll sort it all out and then decide, this is a priority, needs to be done right away. This needs to be taken care of. You know, we can't tell you tonight, this, this, and this has to be done.
Chief?
No, but I think he's asking, is he can go back to work? Because we've been in a pandemic, so we can't work. So he needs to continue working, keep food on his table for his kids.
Scott?
I think the cease and desist, he'll figure out who's doing what, right?
Yes, I got nothing to say.
So on this, maybe between the fire chief and yourself, Scott, is there something that these business owners can do? Can they get you any information now or in the next coming days that will help either one, the town or the fire chief, get this sped up a little?
How many different businesses are here? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine?
One in the background, the chief, too, yes, so. So is there anything that these businesses could do or could submit to you or to the town that would help maybe not speed up, but at least get the process moving?
First of all, I need a complete list, as we explained earlier tonight. What businesses are there? What do they do? Who's the owner of that business? What's the contact information for that? We don't have that. We have a handwritten list with a number and a photocopy of a map. There's a whole bunch of magic marker numbers on that. It's better than nothing, it helps, but we know nothing. I have no idea, anybody in this room, what business you have up there. I'm assuming you all work up there, and I respect that. I have no clue who is working on what business or what each business is.
And technically?
And a lot of the, we found a lot of violations. But this questionable residential trailer is up there with a, it appears to be, it looks like a kid's fort or clubhouse that is a generator house with a 200-gallon residential oil tank that's feeding a generator, that's feeding three RVs that we had no idea even existed up there. I'm told there's nobody living there. It appears, it looks like, that is the power plant for numerous buildings with a water tank on top, that then they explained that to me. This is some of the things that we're finding up there. I have no idea who owns it. I have no idea who's living there. They would not let us in there because nobody knew or they didn't have the key. I get it, but this is why I'm hesitant to just, let's open it all back up and business as usual.
Absolutely.
There's no fire extinguishers up there. It's not as simple, we add a fire hydrant, it's fixed. It's not that simple. There are boats upon boats upon boats that are never going to sail again, that are being stored up there, and boats are full of resin fiberglass, and you do not easily put them out. I do not want to use firefighting foam up there because foam is now considered a hazardous material. And this entire property abouts a wetland. That's another issue. That's more for the Conservation Commission and the DEP. But that affects firefighting, on my standpoint, that I don't want to use firefighting foam, which is going to be a very difficult fire should we get one up there. So this is what we're dealing with, folks. I can't help that everybody chose to do their business up there without going through the normal process. That's what people chose to do, for whatever reason. That's okay. But now that it's come to this point, we need to get back to where it's supposed to be legally. to be legally within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the bylaws of this town.
I would suggest to the owners of the businesses and the landowner, you need to cooperate fully with these people if you want to get back to work. Things, you would have to work with them.
He needs names, contact info.
So each of these businesses that are here tonight should have a permit with the town?
How many auto repair or truck repair businesses are here? None?
How many businesses have filed with the town a permit? Anyone in this room? No, okay. Scott, have we talked to the landowner? Is he here tonight?
No.
Oh, he has a representative. Maybe he's here for the landowner.
I'm not really able to say too much, my lawyer, but.
And what's your name?
John had mentioned getting the housekeeping done, and I told John already I can have that housekeeping done in a week. All of these people will work with me, no problem. The biggest thing is there's a lot of businesses there that might not be here that are permitted that are still on the cease and desist situation.
Can I get your name?
Victor.
Okay. So how many, could you go up to the microphone, please? How many businesses that are up there are licensed, and what are they licensed for?
I wouldn't be able to tell you offhand, but I know that a good chunk of them are.
They have licenses from this board?
Yeah, like Clifford Dumpsters, for example. They weren't released. Needle Brothers was released. What were the other two?
Porter Party Guy, and it was a trucking firm, I don't know.
Oh, Backed Edwards. But Clifford Dumpsters, for example, has been in the town of Abington for years.
Right.
And there's nothing wrong with his lot, and if there was something, it had to have been very minuscule, and I can have that taken care of in seconds.
Needle?
The biggest goal is I know it's going to take you guys time, but the time that you guys take is going to affect these people drastically.
I understand.
So the sooner I can get that housekeeping done, which I can guarantee will be done in one week, those people can go back to work instead of sitting down and waiting.
Those people can go back to work if they have the proper licenses.
The rest of them can figure that shit out. That's fine. For the beginning of it, I want to get all those people that need to go back out and work, working.
When I saw it, I had no problem with Needle. I had no problem with Clifford. I had no problem with the Porter Parties.
Like Leo Pompio down back, he's licensed and permitted. All those people have to work.
Is MJM still doing?
MJM is back there. They need to use that lot. It's a big recycling plant for them, which is permitted.
And they are permitted, correct.
They need to go back to work, but they weren't released from the cease and desist order. I mean, the list goes on. So the sooner we can get that figured out, and that's fine, and I'm willing to work with John.
I think you're going to have to work with the chief and do that, that, because he's leading this, not this board, so, you know.
I think the confusion is, the chief does have the authorization as we go along.
Right, not this board.
Not everybody has to come back here. So as we work with you, and we work with the chief, work throughout the week, but not everybody has to come back in front of this board.
Unless they need a permit.
Some people will be released.
As the one who approved moving that forward faster if I can get the housekeeping done. Is he going to have to come to you to get that answer?
No, he can, he can do it himself. He's authorized to release whatever he thinks is fine.
But if he needs a permit, a permit would have to come in front of the board.
That's a different story, but all the other businesses.
But as far as, it sounds like your housekeeping, you look like you have about a week planned to do here.
I could easily get it done, yeah.
Between that and identifying the businesses, letting the town work, and then if you're working with the chief, I think that's the best goal.
The quicker you work with the chief and get him the information he needs, the quicker some of this will be resolved.
No, I mean, the second he left, I hopped right on and got that list made and everything else, and I told him already if he wants to come back or if someone wants to come back, because apparently you guys visit often, you can come back and we can walk through, and I can identify every person and get you all the information.
Well, that's going to be on the chief, not this board. The chief will be reporting to us. He is our point person that will be handling it, and that's who you will be dealing with, not directly with this board.
I think that's a great idea, though.
But anyone that's looking for an auto license, auto repair, auto sale, any of those, it's going to be a process for you to get your license and everything set up to do it, just like that other gentleman did earlier tonight.
Now, a lot of those vehicles back there are transport vehicles. They're stored there temporarily, and then they're removed. Big thing was some of the cars weren't, didn't look great. It doesn't matter. They all get shipped out anyways. So a lot of those vehicles don't stay. Just about none of those vehicles stay, especially the unregistered ones. They'll come in, and they're stored there, could be a month, two months, three months, and then they go.
Well, I think, again, you have to deal with the chief. He is our point person. He's authorized to release different lots as he sees fit, and anyone else that's going to need a license or a permit for anything is going to have to come back to this board.
Which is fair. I can't argue with that.
Like I said, cooperate with him, and I think things are going to move rather quickly for, if you got permits, if the businesses got permits and they're above board and they're doing the right thing, they're going to be back in business really quick. If they got a problem, he's going to have to deal with it, you're going to have to remedy it, and then they'll get back. If you don't have a permit, you're going to have a problem.
And illegal truck repair and auto repair up there is probably not going to work.
So Victor, can you talk to us a little bit maybe about the housekeeping? What are you going to plan on doing over the next week?
I guess one of the biggest thing was unlabeled containers. That was a major thing for John specifically, just because with fires, it's dangerous, so on and so forth, so that is something that can be done easily, just going through and labeling what everything is. Obviously, if there is 2,000-plus gallons, then I guess it would be my responsibility to get whatever the permit is I need to store that kind of stuff and store it properly, which is fine, and I can take care of that, but what was, what were the other couple of things? Please.
Again, we gave him some initial verbal things that we saw immediately, and they've begun to work on him, to give them a chance to get a jump on it. You're going to get a full list because we're still compiling that, and we will work, you know, some of these I want remedied almost immediately, which you're working on, and some of these you're going to have up to 14 to 21 days. We're hoping to get the place open well before that, obviously. My suggestion for everybody in the room, because I know you all want to get back to work, and we want to get you back to work, we just want to make it safe, and we're looking to avoid fires up there, is it Clifford Dumpster up there? You've got your own dumpster company, I think, or you can use whomever you want. I would put a 40-yard dumpster in front of every single business in their lot and fill it. Get rid of everything. Get rid of the tires correctly, put all of the trash and junk and wood, pallet, broken pieces and like that. Fill a 40-yard dumpster in each one of your locations as a start. You can probably do that tomorrow and massively mitigate the fire load that's up there right now. That's going to be the fastest thing to get rid of it. Every propane tank that's up there, legally dispose of it in the right place. There are propane tanks everywhere we looked, and we did not look in any of these storage containers, because once you, everybody is properly licensed and permitted, as part of an annual inspection, we will be checking that. So things have to be cleaned up, but that is the first step. The main thing right now from the fire department is housekeeping, and it was across the board for every, basically every single business that we saw. Ironically, I think the only one that did not have an issue was the Porter Party Company. He's already back in business. Every other business, and I don't know what you do, I have no idea what the businesses are up there, because most people weren't there, but every one of them, there is an accumulation of trash and debris and flammable issues and furniture. Get rid of it. That is the number one cause that's going to start a fire up there. You could all start that tomorrow, but I can't tell you what to do. I can only recommend for you. That would be a massive help towards moving forward. I got my fire captain up there all day tomorrow inspecting as needed, but you need time to get this done. I did speak with some of the companies up there. I realize that tire companies are slow for a number of reasons, but there are massive amounts of tires. This needs to get going. Everybody's got to get rid of the tires, and that's not just from the fire department, that's a board of health issue because of mosquitoes, and they're right around the corner, because every one of them is full of water, and they're all going to breed mosquitoes. That's not just the fire department. That's a board of health issue as well. So start cleaning up every property. That's the number one thing, and we will work with you. We're going to come up with a list. I haven't got it yet from the other department heads. I can't just say this is what it is, because there's, there's going to be things, I don't know what each individual inspector found up there, but we're going to go down it categorically, fix it, so that everybody can move forward and do it properly. The number one thing is housekeeping.
Does anyone else have anything to say? Yes, ma'am. Please come up to the microphone, give me your name and address, please, for the record.
Hello. So I'm here with Brooks and Sons Trucking. It's a legal business. We filed all the documentation that's needed to be filed for years. My question to you, the chief, what if you have the documentation saying that it's legitimate and it's legal, and there's nothing that's missing as far as permits? Would you release that company from your cease and desist? How are we going to get this done? Because we have kids to take care of.
I need the microphone, so I'll answer your question. I need the list from the landlord. We need the list of the different types of businesses and the contact people, and we find out where it was in that map so that when, we can try to then coordinate with the map that we drew up of those areas and overlapped out on what they're giving us. So I don't know what your business is. I don't know where it is. Again, nothing's labeled up there. That's another issue. We need to label the businesses. It is an absolute wide open, and I understand and I respect it's different businesses. We don't know that, because there's nothing, unless there's a vehicle parked with a business inside of it. For the most part, nothing's labeled, so that's what I would need.
So I find it hard to believe that no one saw that, because we have the listed DOT numbers and everything, so kind of confused when you say you don't know what you're seeing.
Nothing's labeled.
Okay, so we can help that to you, but we just wanted to know at some point how we can move forward because again, it's a pandemic and everyone needs to make plans.
And we understand, but we also had a death there last week, and we don't want to repeat, repeat that. And I understand the pandemic. I do. I understand all of this, but last week was a bad week for other people, too.
Anyone else?
When can we get together, me and John?
I need the list from you.
No, I'll bring you, if you can meet at the land tomorrow, I will.
No, I've actually got several meetings in my office tomorrow. You're going to have to come to the fire station.
And that's fine, and you just go with that. I hand that over to you tomorrow.
I want a list, a complete list, not just a list of, I need the list of all the contact information, all of that.
Complete list, and then we can release people like others.
Not necessarily. We still have to go through this. It's not.
Housekeeping will take care of that and the list, and then we can release the people that are licensed, permitted.
I cannot, I cannot say that here tonight, because I still have to go through, I don't know what the other departments had that they found, until we, we will release people when we get to clear each one as we can, and we're trying to move on that quickly. I have not got it back yet from the other department heads. We finished this today at 2:00 in the afternoon. They sent, we have to have town council look at this. I'm moving as quick as I can, but this was four hours ago, or five hours ago.
So if there's nothing else, I would like to put this on the agenda for our next meeting, which will be April 12th. Is that correct?
Yep.
So we can do a follow-up then. Hopefully, some of the businesses are back open up by then, and we'll hopefully have another report from the chief on that and where we're going after that. So you know what you have to do, and I guess that you and the chief will work on the details and get what you can done. He's authorized to release any business, providing he feels that it's safe and a legal business.
The biggest thing is just timeline, speaking of how long these people are going to be sitting at home, not doing their job.
Well, like you said, maybe every one of them needs a dumpster tomorrow and starts cleaning up up there, and it's probably going to move things faster.
Scott, can you just give us an update as this progresses?
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, I'll reach out to the other department heads that were involved and let them know that, you know, it is imperative, we want to get everybody back to work.
We're not going to drag our feet on this. We're going to get our department heads to work as quickly as possible to get the report to the chief, and he will work with you and get as many open as he can, as he sees fit.
And again, just a reminder on that, we released several businesses today because they were at the business, we could identify what business that was, we could communicate with them directly if there was an issue, and even they had some minor housekeeping things that was enough, it was not enough to shut it down. Most of the sites up there, there was nobody there.
Okay.
It is what it is.
Chief?
Still work on it, and if it takes forever, I mean, I can't move your timeline faster. I can just take care of what I need to take care of, and then I'll leave it up to you guys.
For the businesses that are here, can you, will everything funnel through you? So all, like the building inspector, will everything come through you and then to these owners, or?
Yes, because that's going to be easier, more efficient for the entire process. So you don't have to deal with every other department. I want to be the point contact. It's going to be easier for you, and I think it's going to be easier for the town.
Right.
So I am going to be that contact just to get this done. I think that's actually the fastest way to get this done.
And if he tells us he's releasing a business, that's good with us. But he's not going to release a business that needs an auto repair license or a class two used car license or a junk license, because that has to go through a process of getting license from this board. So anyone that's up there that's doing repairs and stuff, you know, that's not going to be released before our next meeting. I guarantee you that. The trucking businesses, possibly. I don't know. The towing businesses, I don't know the situation up there. I mean, the tow, towing business probably doesn't have a lot to do to get released, but it's the auto repairs and everything else that's not going to be released in two weeks.
It also suggests that if you have businesses, tenants up there that don't have permits, I suggest you get on them and say, get in there, get a permit, or take off. You know, that's falling on you, so. I know they want to work, but we need to see the permits. We need to know what's going on up there.
And there's a process for applying for permits. It's not something that you tell us the day of the meeting you want it. It has to be advertised in the paper. If there's a zoning issue, you have to go to zoning for it and then to this board, so, you know, you have to analyze the businesses that you have up there, coordinate it with the chief, and the chief can pretty much tell you what each business is going to need.
And the sooner they start the process, the sooner they get back to work.
Okay. So we will have it on our agenda just for an update on April 12th, and hopefully at least most of you or some of you are back to business before then. But you heard the chief, you know what you need to do, and I suggest the quicker you do it, the quicker he may release some of these businesses. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Next item on the agenda is to vote to approve the minutes of March 8th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of March 8th, 2021.
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Poked. Guys have it. We'll wait for some of them to clear out.
I'll take a five-minute recess?
Yeah, why don't we take a five-minute recess?
Karen.
And we're back. The next item is vote on outdoor seating for restaurants. Um, Scott, why don't you explain that? I know, uh, last year, this board approved outdoor seating, and it's my understanding we're going to continue that with the vote of the board?
Yeah, so, um, we, we put a, um, a, a sort of an end date, I believe we ended it with our vote in November of last year. Uh, the governor and, and the state has extended that till up to, um, I believe sixty days beyond the state of emergency. Uh, so what I'd like to do is just that we vote to also extend any of the outdoor, um, dining that we've already approved, um, so they, they can, um...
Continue.
Initiate, yeah, continue doing it, um, along with those guidelines throughout this year, up until sixty days beyond the state of emergency.
Okay. Um, I heard that, um, maybe it was just Hanover Street, they were going to do it until December 1st, but, um, I want to do it as long as we can for the businesses.
Yeah, that's what I thought, if we just go along with the governor's guidelines. Um, they, I think what will happen is because, at the end of the state of emergency, the allowance from the ABCC, the way that it was approved, I think that's going to end.
Okay.
So, that gives us, until that's over, and then it's, if that's a time, I think it's also that if, um, the restaurants come back to us and we find that there's been no issues, that it's worked out well, um, you know, we probably will encourage them to continue doing it if they'd like to.
Okay.
We just would have to probably reapply with ABC.
Just amend their license.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Can we, um, if the state says, yeah, you can shut them down, can we continue to allow outdoor seating permanently?
So I think, I think what we would have to do then is they would have to reapply through ABCC. We could obviously approve the outdoor seating, it's the serving of alcohol.
Oh, okay.
That will, will expire, um, after the state of emergency.
And then they could reapply at that point.
For the, uh...
Yeah.
They could reapply, and as the licensing authority, as long as we approve it, they'll most likely approve it, too.
That's almost like a little silver lining of this pandemic. I kind of enjoy the outdoor seating at the various restaurants.
Yeah, I think a lot more people are getting used to it and enjoying it, and they found good ways to do it, um, once we find that, you know, we haven't had any issues with any of the establishments last year that we approved. Um, you know, there were no, they all worked well with, um, police, fire, building as far as making sure that everything was safe. As I know, none of the tents ended up down Route 18.
Yeah.
Scott, is this, is this a vote to extend, or do we got to, like, reopen it?
No, I, I think what it is, is we're going to establish that it starts tomorrow, and will go up until, so the, the motion should be to reinstate outdoor seating as pre-approved for the establishments as we pre-approved, uh, approved them prior.
For the establishments that were already approved.
And then if somebody else opens that didn't get one, they're welcome to come.
Uh, that was my next question. Can, can we open this up to other establishments that missed the boat?
Right, yeah.
And allow them to?
Yes. They can, they can apply, but they have to go through the same process that all the others did last year.
Which is pretty quick and easy, you told me I could approve them.
Yeah.
Can we, um, make sure that these establishments know?
Oh, yeah, no, they're all going to, as soon as, after today's vote, they're all going to get a...
They're all watching.
They're all watching.
Yep.
But they're all, yeah, they're all going to get a message from Nancy, um, you know, whether it's a postcard or an email, however, she communicates with them, we're going to let them know that we have extended this again. Um, you know, obviously, we want to support our businesses.
Right.
Okay, so any questions? So entertain a motion to extend the outdoor seating to the establishments that were approved last year for sixty days beyond the pandemic. And anyone else that didn't apply last year, please do so.
I'll second that, just because I don't want to repeat it.
It's going to go sixty days past the governor's...
Right.
Okay.
A minimum, right? And that goes along with the state guidelines, too.
That they'll be effective Tuesday, March 23rd?
Yes.
Yes.
Tomorrow.
So it's so moved, Kevin?
Yes.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. And now, the most exciting part of all meetings.
It's what I wait for.
The town manager's report.
Uh, this will be very brief, as you know.
I didn't see that in the packet, though.
I, I texted it to you. Really all's I have here right now is that, uh, with our, with the recent, um, aid package that was passed by the, um, the federal government, the preliminary numbers, uh, from that American Rescue Plan, I believe they call it, um, should net Abington approximately 1.6 million, so a million 640 plus or minus. Um, it should come in, right now, it looks like it's coming in two payments. Uh, the first within the ninety days, and then the second would be approximately a year later. Um, and again, the money, I think it's going to be administered by Plymouth County. Um, we're not sure yet, but that's likely the, the way, um, it'll go.
Um, just to interrupt you a minute on that, Congressman Lynch's office called me while you were away for your cell phone number, and he's going to be calling you to explain some of this also.
Okay.
All right.
Should I put it off till the next town manager's report?
Um, maybe, because they're going to call you this week, I think.
Okay.
And, um, I didn't get into details, they just asked for your, your number.
Okay.
Because the congressman wants to explain it.
So the upside to it is, though, the one part that I do know, there's a certain portion of it that can be used for lost revenue from the cities and towns, so, um, it will help with that, uh, obviously, that revenue gap that we've, we've had, that's been sort of stymying our, our budget process. Um, but, again, I'll be looking forward to hearing from Senator, uh, from Congressman Lynch on this, and, uh, the MMA hasn't really broken it down yet, and we haven't heard anything from, um, a couple of minimum pages yet, exactly how it's going to be administered. But it's good news, we needed it, um, and, and, you know, obviously want to thank the congressman on all their hard work in getting it done. Um, and I think, that's really all I've got for you today. Uh, I think some of you saw, there was an email from Allison.
Yes.
Um, at the end of the day, it's sort of, um, asking if there was anything that we, we would love to see added to the budget. So I did give her a, a, a list of items that, hopefully that, you know, we can get some additional funding for. Um, I asked for some assistance with, uh, affordable housing with, we, we're starting up, uh, tomorrow night will be our first meeting of the Affordable Housing Trust. Um, so we're, we're asking for some additional money from the state, maybe to help us get some technical assistance with that. You know, we do have some monies, but, uh, every little bit would help, and, um, you know, as that group starts out, it would be good to have some professional assistance. I have several consultants that I've worked with in the past, they could really help it get off the board. I asked for some assistance with some, uh, with diversity, uh, training. Uh, I think that it'd be helpful with diversity awareness and training, uh, throughout Town Hall and throughout the town in general. Um, we asked for some, uh, assistance with, uh, public safety, as far as maybe helping us with equipment and communication equipment. So, there were some other items that I added in there, and, and, you know, maybe we'll get a little bit.
Okay.
Scott, any update on the, uh, the RFP for the company to conduct the police chief search, was with council, you said?
Yep, it's all done. Um, it's, it's sitting on my desk, the advertising date, the initial advertising's April 5th. So, the, um, and like I said before, so what will happen is, on April 5th, that'll be advertised. I'm assuming, you know, I'll probably have at least a half a dozen requests of companies that'll want to see it. Uh, I will weed it out to whichever ones are qualified, and then, um, you, so it, it, let me explain this, it's, so it's, um, a request for qualifications, which means we don't necessarily hire the lowest bidder. What we do is we, um, look at all of the proposals that come into us, and we look at which one fits best for our needs. And then, once we've selected that, and it's qualification-based, that'll say, you know, some, a firm who's done many of these before, or they've been successful in other towns, and within the document, there's some ways that we can, uh, score in criteria that we can use to decide who's most qualified. After we've selected that, um, we can have interviews with them, then, and this board will be the selection committee. We can bring them in and talk to them, and then we make that decision. Once we've made the decision, we then open up the price proposal. We have a fairly good idea of what sort of ballpark we'll be in. If the price proposal seems fair, we can hire them. If we think that there's a problem, like, um, you know, it looks great, but way too much money, then we can jump down to the, our next, um, person, so. As opposed to the other process typically, you know, would be called an invitation for bid, where we would just put out a document, and whoever gave us the, the lowest prices, who we would hire. This way, we get to someone who can fit with our needs, um, a little bit better. So, the process is, April 5th, it hits the street, people will ask for it, they'll have a few weeks to look at it, submit responses. When I get the responses in, I'm going to disseminate them to this group. Uh, individually, you'll look at them, rank them, at a meeting, we'll discuss it publicly, um, make a choice, or we can maybe say, we'd like to interview two of them, one of them. Depends how many we get back. We can have them in, we can do an interview, and then select them, and then that person's off and running.
So we're looking at, if you're, April 5th or a couple of weeks, we're looking at the end of April, maybe our last meeting, or the first meeting in May before we...
I would say sometime in May. I, I have a timeline, it's within the document on how, when we expect them to start, and when we expect them to be done.
Okay.
And it all backs up to having somebody ready to walk in that door on September 1st.
Okay.
Good.
And it does include, I, I do expect that we would want, um, a, a full assessment. So it's not even, whoever we hire will also, you know, will, you know, they'll, they'll do search, they'll do interviews, they'll weed them out, but they'll also set up an assessment center for whichever, if we come up with the top three candidates.
Okay.
So it's, it's pretty, it's pretty extensive.
Anything else for the town manager? Anything else you want to talk about on the next meeting?
I'll talk to you, Scott, later about executive session, next meeting, or something I might want to discuss in during executive session?
Yeah, not a problem, just let me know what the reason for. I had it on there tonight, on the off shot, if I had any, um...
Collective bargaining for tonight.
Oh, so we're not going to?
No, there's no reason for it. Um, I, I think we were probably at, at a good point with it, but I, um, just have to discuss what the, uh, county has, if things are signed.
Um, so I, a couple of things. Someone asked me today, um, you know those, um, doggy bag things we have at Island Grove and the, the things where you have the collection thing? Could we get some of those at some of the other parks around, specifically, uh, Chestnut Street, Laidler Field, which is Little League Field? And, um, I, I see, and the neighbor across the street sees a lot of people taking their dogs there and not cleaning up. So we're thinking maybe if we had one of those, um, bag dispensaries with the collection thing there, it might spark some people to do so.
Let me talk to John Stone about it.
Okay.
See what the, what the cost is on them and...
Yep. Uh, the other thing, um, what's going on with North and Center School? How close are we to doing something with that? Or is that something the Affordable Housing Trust is going to be discussing?
Yeah, so my goal with that is, once the trust is established, we'll look at those buildings and decide. Um, I, I know there was a, uh, I think a surplus building committee that was put together at one point, we'll look at what they thought best uses were, but I think ultimately, what I would like to see is that trust take over those and, and, and put those out somehow to a developer. I think that, I think the Center School, is that the one, is that the one that you sent me some photos of today? There, there may be some, some sort of larger issues there, because there's a lot of property, and we'd want to preserve a baseball field and maybe create some parking for it, and do something like that. But I, I think ultimately, once that trust is established, we can get them working on it and then make some decisions.
Okay. Do you know if there's been an asbestos assessment on those properties?
I think it was on North Only as part of the, um, police, uh, the fire station feasibility study, and they did find whatever they needed there, and apparently, the buildings are built at the same time, so they're similar in construction.
Similar, yeah.
Ultimately, you know, yeah, at the end of the day, um, we're, we're probably going to have to do full assessments of both of them, if they weren't complete, before putting them out to bid for a developer. But, you know, again, that, that cost, any expenses like that, we would expect to be, to recoup with the sale of the property.
Okay. Okay, I don't have anything else.
I got nothing.
We have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.